My name is John McKay and I'm the Member of Parliament for Scarborough-Guilwood. And I'm here with my friends Mitzi Hunter, the MPP for Scarborough-Guilwood, and Paul Ainsley, the councillor for the City of Toronto. And we have with us tonight a good friend of mine, Steve McKinnon, who's a Member of Parliament for Gatineau, and his claim to fame these days is the Parliamentary Secretary to the Minister of Procurement and Services in Canada. And he's about all things vaccine. Now, you need to know that Steve is possibly one of the shrewdest political minds in all of Ottawa. I've known Steve for years and his advice has always been quite excellent. Now, he also, however, he does have a liability. He was not born and raised in Scarborough. But we forgive him for that and we appreciate his coming on tonight. So Steve, you've been at this for quite a number of months now, trying to procure vaccines in very difficult circumstances. And so can you generally describe the circumstances in which the Government of Canada is facing? And can you then describe what we are faced with as a nation? Now, I probably, and maybe then I'll ask Mitzi and then Paul to both introduce themselves, but also to ask specific questions to you. So let's start with our guest. And Steve, give us the general picture of where we're at. How many we've procured? How many we anticipate procuring and go from there?
Well, thanks, John, and good evening, everyone. Good evening, councillor, good evening, MPP Mitzi. It's an honour to be with all of you and I want to thank you for having me at this town hall tonight. I know that you've had some illustrious folks on as guests, so I'll try and at least come up to some sort of standard. But I want to thank everyone who's logged in tonight and understand and know that there's a lot of information circulating out there. Sometimes it's hard to process it all. It's changing all the time as well. And so we're here to try and help do what we can to make sense of it. So let me tell you as best I can about the priorities of the Government of Canada. And I'll do it really quickly because I know we want to get to questions. Early on in the process, we didn't know which vaccines would be approved, not approved, in clinical trials, which would develop problems. So the government decided very early on that we were going to sign contracts with seven leading vaccine manufacturers. And as of today, four of those seven have all come up positive. So as you know, Pfizer, Moderna, AstraZeneca, Johnson &amp; Johnson have all gone through clinical trials, all been proven safe and effective, and all are on our order book for different quantities. I would say, you would have to say the Pfizer vaccine is our core procurement and the one that is continuing to yield the most vaccines and the one that is in deepest circulation was also the first to be approved. The second to be approved, Moderna, not far behind. And again, we receive less frequency in ever-increasing quantities. The third is AstraZeneca, and I know that's been very topical lately, one that we haven't received as much of. But we started this week with doses, as people know, from the United States. And the fourth is Johnson &amp; Johnson. We have not, that's a single-shot vaccine. We haven't received any of that yet. It's also the last one to have been approved. But we announced today that we would begin receiving doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson at the end of April. All of that to say that we will have roughly round numbers, about 35 million vaccines, 40 million vaccines, of just what we know is approved and what we know is coming by the end of June. And if you do the simple math, that's at least a dose for every single Canadian. Now, we hope to increase that, we hope to improve on that. We are working every day to continuously bring forward vaccine shipments more quickly into Canada. We've done that with Pfizer on several occasions. We'll continue to do it with other vaccines. But we hope to even do better than that, such that more than, that we can accelerate this process of vaccinating every Canadian, even with the double doses and doing so as quickly as possible. So let me leave it there, John, and I know folks will have a lot of questions about that.
Let me turn to Mitzi because she is an Ontario person here. And maybe she can drill down as to where does Ontario stand in this entire process?
So thanks, thanks, John and Steve, welcome to Scarborough. I'm surprised that John McKay did not tell you that it was the centre of the universe. He normally does that.
He does that all the time.
Nobody knows that.
You heard it. So, you know, this is an opportunity really for us to answer the burning questions that our constituents have. And it really is an honour to have someone like you here with us tonight who is really right in the middle of working with Minister Ennain to bring those lifesaving vaccines to Canada. And I would like to thank you and if you could pass on our thanks to her for the tremendous job and of course to the Prime Minister as well, the tremendous job that you're doing on behalf of everyone in Canada to make sure that we have these lifesaving vaccines. And I can tell you from calling constituents over the last few weeks, this is really all that is on their minds, is how do they receive those vaccines? Oftentimes in our legislature, when we ask about more vaccines, we are told that there is an issue with supply. So I'm really going to ask you that direct question because you are the Parliamentary Secretary responsible for the delivery of supply. And if you can explain to our constituents who are watching, you know, what is happening with the supply and how reliable is it? I understand that, you know, we have only received about 35% this week of expected supply. So what is that fact or what's going on here?
Oh, thank you, Mitzi. That's a great question. And I know folks have questions from time to time about that. And unfortunately, sometimes politics intrudes. But we know everyone's working as hard as they can. And let me just thank all the frontline health workers in Scarborough and beyond who are delivering vaccines, you know, as we speak. So as a general rule, Ontario, and not even as a general rule, almost without exception, Ontario gets a per capita share. So if 1,000 vaccines enter Canada, Ontario gets about 28% of all of the vaccines that enter Canada. And we communicate every day with Ontario and the other provinces to tell them what we expect in terms of shipments in a given week. Sometimes, as you know, those shipments can get moved by a day or they don't clear customs in the country that they're departing. And sometimes they transit via the United States. In short, there are sometimes logistical delays with these vaccines. But almost without fail, we have delivered every single vial of vaccines that we've promised to the provinces, and that's certainly the case today. In fact, we've done better. As I said in my answer to John, we've managed to pull forward some planned doses. So people might remember, you certainly will, Mitzi, we used to say we'll have 6 million doses by the end of March. Well, today's the end of March, March 31st. And we've delivered nine and a half million doses to Canada over the first quarter. And we've announced yesterday that we'll do better in our provisioning for the second quarter as well. And I went through those numbers at a high level in my answer as well. So this week, Premier Ford seems to be referring to the Moderna doses that had a bit of a logistical problem and were delayed by two days. But that is not a material delay. Those doses are winging their way to Ontario as we speak, as are the AstraZeneca doses. And I can assure everyone that every single dose that was committed to Ontario in this week will be received in Ontario in this week. And also that Ontario has about 600,000 vaccines to deploy already that are sitting in warehouses and freezers and so on, ready to deploy to Scarborough and points beyond.
Thank you.
Paul, drill down to Toronto. What's your view?
Yes, Steve, thank you. Thank you, John and Steve. Thank you very much for joining us from Gatineau. It's very much appreciated having you here this evening. And I know the tireless work that you're undergoing, not only on vaccine procurement, but also on PPE masks. One of the questions that I always get, I'm getting a lot from seniors lately around vaccines. And we talked about the AstraZeneca and the Johnson &amp; Johnson that we haven't gotten any of yet, but they're a one-shot dose. Is there, how does the government determine? Is there one better than another one based on like two doses versus one dose? Or like generally, I just tell people, if you can get your shot, go and get your shot.
Well, councillor, that's a great question. And I first want to salute you and the work you and the city have done at setting up community vaccination sites. And as we continue to go through this process, I know we'll be relying on the folks at the City of Toronto a lot. So I want to thank you for your vision on that. And look, the Prime Minister and other world leaders, scientists, epidemiologists, will all tell you the same thing. If a vaccine's been approved, and I took you through the ones that have been approved in Canada, then, and it's offered to you, then that is the best vaccine for you. These vaccines have gone through a rigorous process. No shortcuts have been taken, I should stress. The clinical trial process and the examination of these vaccines by our regulators and regulators around the world has been rigorous and not changed one iota from the process that is followed regularly. So all of these vaccines are both safe and effective. What does that mean? It means that there have been no ill health effects identified. And number two, these will keep you safe, not sick, out of the hospital. So all of these vaccines are safe and effective. Now, they're based on different technologies. Pfizer and Moderna is a relatively new technology called mRNA. I'm not a scientist, I'm not going to get into explaining them. Whereas AstraZeneca and now Johnson &amp; Johnson and others are more traditional vaccine platforms. But again, I want to stress, all safe, all effective, all will help keep you safe, all will keep your family safe, all will get us one step closer to ending this pandemic.
Thanks, Paul. Did I understand, Steve, that your response to Mitzi's question was that Ontario has received 28% of the doses? Yeah, just it doesn't, I just want to compare that with, Ontario has about 40% of the population, so I'm not quite sure.
Oh, did I say, okay, my math is off. You'll understand, a lot of numbers go through my head. Let me be very, let me be as clear as possible. Ontario receives its prorated by population, per capita amount of vaccines every day.
Okay, I just didn't want to start a constitutional war unnecessarily.
Thank you, John. Thank you for correcting me on that.
Good catch, John. That was a good catch.
Per capita, per capita, absolutely 100%. I apologize if I've screwed up on those calculations.
So the, we for the past year watched this unfolding train wreck south of the border. And the response of the previous administration has been borderline negligent. I wouldn't even say borderline, it's just plain negligent. With the new administration under President Biden, the Americans seem to have got their act together. And so the question really is, well, why is the US so much further ahead of us in terms of the rollout of their vaccine? They seem to, you know, be in the order of 20, 25%, where we're only creeping up to maybe 10% of our population. So I'm just curious as to what your response may be to that.
Well, thanks, John. Look, as you know, the US is a manufacturing country. They manufacture vaccines. And a couple of those companies are in fact headquartered in the United States. That is not true of Canada. And one thing that I think we all have to be honest about as Canadians is we allowed our bio-manufacturing capability to deteriorate. Now, we're changing that.
We're changing that? We froze? Okay, you just froze there for a second, right? We are changing that?
Yeah, we're changing that. And we announced today in Toronto that we would be investing in bio-manufacturing in Toronto. We've announced other investments all over the country. But certainly a very major platform announcement today in Toronto by the federal minister and Premier Ford. So we'll be correcting the bio-manufacturing problem, but we are reliant on importing vaccines. And as such, we have struck early contracts and big contracts for vaccines. We are among the earliest in the country. If you look all around the world, there's a race for these vaccines. The European Union is threatening export restrictions. We, depending on what day of the week, are inch ahead of, you know, countries like Germany or France or Spain or countries that we like to compare ourselves to. But the two big ones with huge manufacturing capability, the UK and the US, are moderately ahead of us. I think we'll catch up because we do have a more diversified vaccine portfolio. We get vaccines from different places all over the world, India, the US now, Europe. So our diversified portfolio will serve us well. And if we can get a jab in every arm by the end of June, John, I don't think you'll find that by the start of summer, we'll be that far behind any country in the world at that stage. And so I'm very, very optimistic that, you know, the work of these community vaccination clinics, the work of our professionals right across the country and our diversified slate of vaccines, we're going to catch up quickly and kind of arrive at around the same point as our peer countries, you know, by the onset of summer.
So Steve, what about the threat of the EU though, in terms of restricting to their population? They don't want anyone else who they're supplying to getting ahead of them. How does Canada fit into that, given that that's where our supply is coming from as well?
Well, that's a great question. And folks will know, Mitzi, and as I know you do, that, you know, if you're in Europe, you kind of look at the UK and that you compare yourself. Here in Canada, we compare ourselves to the US. So in the EU, what they've noticed is that the UK, who are relying almost exclusively on the AstraZeneca vaccine that was developed at Oxford University and is manufactured throughout Europe and including in the UK. So they've tried to threaten the UK with restricting access to some vaccine doses because their rate has fallen behind the UK. So they are really aiming these export restrictions at the UK in an attempt to kind of even the score a little bit. We've been reassured, our diplomats, the Prime Minister, who has talked, spoken with the head of the EU on several occasions, the European Union, and of course with their member countries' leaders as well, we've been reassured repeatedly that we are not the target of this move. And to date, not a single dose of vaccine has been restricted from leaving the EU because they're neither targeting Canada nor really targeting Pfizer and Moderna. They're targeting mostly the UK and mostly the AstraZeneca vaccine.
Good to hear.
Steve, when you talk about the AstraZeneca and you said that Great Britain relies on it, and we've all seen the reports in the media about age restrictions on AstraZeneca. Is there, is it a different type of AstraZeneca that's being used in Canada than, say, in Great Britain? Is it a different production facility? Like, they seem less concerned about it in Canada.
Well, that's a great question, councillor. Now, AstraZeneca does have distributed production, but it is the same vaccine. It's manufactured to the same standards in all of its, in all of the production facilities where it's manufactured. Our initial shipment of AstraZeneca vaccine came from India, the Serum Institute of India, world leaders in vaccine production. I go back to my comment to your earlier question. This is a safe and effective vaccine, period, full stop. It has been approved for use. What countries do continuously is monitor not only the clinical trial data that was used to approve it, but real-world data. So now we have almost an entire country, the UK, getting vaccinated with this vaccine. So they of course follow, monitor health outcomes and so on. And they noticed rare instances of clotting, blood clots. So warnings were issued. I think you saw warnings be issued in a couple of European countries. And now in Canada, by an advisory committee on immunisation. So what that means is that a pause is put on. Let's take a look at this. Let's see if there's a trend here. Let's see if there's causation. No one is saying that the vaccine is causing these problems. Everyone's just saying, there's something here, let's take a look. So appropriately, a pause put on for 55 and under in Canada. But that's an Advisory Council on Immunisation. That is meant to be guidance to the provinces. It is an approved vaccine, it is safe and it is effective. This pause has been put on, but there should not be undue alarm. Sometimes these things get put increasingly out of context and inappropriately so. But no one should fear the AstraZeneca vaccine.
Yeah, I know that when you speak about that, and I've had comments from people about it. And one of the things that I've used is statistics about airline flights. And then you have a greater chance of getting a blood clot on flying on a long-distance airline flight than you do from getting a shot of AstraZeneca. But it's still, I think, the big issue in this day and age of social media and everybody gets their news almost instantaneously from many different sources can blow things like that out of proportion.
Yes, and I'm afraid that that might be what's happening in this case.
Yeah, well, maybe moving from the larger picture to the immediate real picture, we should read out a question from Louise. Who said, "Just a shout out to our wonderful staff at Scarborough St Henry Hospital for how well organised the COVID-19 shots. We were there last Saturday and everything went like clockwork." Well, I can personally testify that I was there today and everything did go like clockwork. St Henry Hospital is well organised. It was 40 minutes for me from parking lot to parking lot. And it just was as smooth and as easy an experience as one could reasonably expect in extraordinarily difficult circumstances. So big shout out to the Scarborough Health Network, big shout out to the St Henry Hospital for the way in which they moved. I agree completely with Louise. So anyways, this kind of shoot stuff.
No edits, John, or reactions?
Not so far. You know, other than listening to myself talk, which is a bit of a problem at the best of times, I can't necessarily attribute that to vaccine. But no, it's no reactions thus far. I did share with you a amusing story prior at the end of the shot. So we were sitting in a, we were released after 15 minutes after the shot and a gentleman sitting in front of me was approached by the nurse and the nurse said, "Sir, you're free to go now." And the man stands up and he says, "Well, does this still mean that I'm a man?" And the nurse says, "Well, yes, sir, you're still a man." He then proceeded to try to exit through the entrance. He got turned around by the nurse and headed towards the exit. And I said to him as he walked us, "Clearly, you're still a man. You don't follow instructions." So we had a bit of a laugh about that afterwards. My wife particularly appreciated it. So Mitzi, what's your first question?
So Steve, there's a lot of questions about the spacing of the second dose and would really like to hear your thoughts on that. And I'm going to just do Linda's question justice and just read it to you because she does have health concerns and that's why she's asking this question. So she says, you know, "I had my first dose and am scheduled for my second dose in four months. I have, she has kidney disease and her kidneys are functioning at 9% and will, she'll be going on dialysis within the year." So she's really concerned that delaying the second dose, you know, will have an effect. So can you speak to that in terms of maybe why the delay and how it will affect someone like Linda?
Well, thank you and thank you, Linda, for the question. And thank you, Louise, for the earlier observation. And thanks for the folks delivering the vaccine. That's a question I get all the time, Mitzi, and it's an important one. And I think it's important to underline that the scientists help us, help guide us and the public health authorities. And what they were confronted with in a world where we were continued, where vaccine production was really just ramping up. Every country in the world is in a race for these vaccines. And we have these variants, these very troubling and people, you know, reading the news and saying, you know, this disease is mutating, it's changing. And we're in a race to make sure that we vaccinate as many people as possible before these variants take hold, especially if they're, if they are a nastier form of the disease. So the public health officials said it is, they said it's fundamentally a trade-off between getting as many people with one dose and having the prescribed regime of spacing three or four weeks between doses. And they looked at the evidence, including Israeli data and other data that showed that there was significant protection against the disease and indeed against the variants with a single shot of the vaccine. And so on balance, they weighed, the public health professionals, the protection, the wide protection of the most possible people with one shot and a longer delay and a longer spacing between vaccines and said that that would be permissible. Now, every province gets to decide. Every province can decide that it will stick to the three to four weeks or deploy the vaccine more widely by using a single shot and then waiting, I think it's the three to four months, that would be the sort of the outside interval for the vaccine. And many provinces, including obviously Ontario, have come down on the, "Let's get as many people vaccinated as quickly as possible" side. There is good evidence that that's effective. And there's good evidence that they make people safer and keep people from getting sick and keep people from going to the hospital. But we're really following the evolving thinking on this on the part of the public health authorities. And of course, as vaccine supplies continue to ramp up as they are, that interval, that four months, will keep shrinking all the time.
So that's really good. So it is really all about getting as many people in the community vaccinated to slow the spread of the disease so no one actually gets sick.
Exactly.
And everyone's protected. So we are in this together. Thank you for that.
Can I just share another piece of really good news that we got this week? Because we're watching this news, of course, from all over the world. But and the great thing is that they're the same vaccines. But the Centers for Disease Control, I believe yesterday, came out with the extremely good news. Um, but the Centers for Disease Control, I believe yesterday, came out with the the extremely good news, maybe the best news since we learned of the vaccines themselves, that the vaccines not only keep you from getting ill, but they may in fact uh be uh significantly, like as in over ninety percent effective in preventing you from getting the virus and transmitting it. Now, that would be the best piece of news that any of us could could possibly hope for. That was unclear before. We really just trialed this vaccine for its ability to stop you from getting sick. But today or yesterday, we learned that no, not only is that true, it may stop you from getting the virus and from transmitting it to others. That's great news.
And it it reduces dramatically the mortality rate to zero thus far.
Indeed, exactly. Very true, John.
Yeah, um, I see the the and I guess the other bit of good news was you talked about was it's estimated now that everybody will get their first shot by September, sorry, June. I know the Prime Minister at one point, the goal was uh September. So that's great news. Um, in terms of replenishing, is that all laid out? Does the you know, whether it's going to be two months or four months, is that all laid out for people for their second shot?
Um, can you expand on that a little bit?
Well, I guess making sure that the government has the supply like you
Oh, I see. Yes, yeah.
Thirty-five million shots by uh by June and we're having trouble with the European Union. I don't know if we're gonna get in a legal fight with them, but so people are very happy. They're they're getting their first shot. And after you've had their first shot and John knows, you get a you get your next, you have your appointment for the second one. Like my mother got hers a couple of weeks ago and her next appointment's in July. Um, so you have supply till June. Is there a plan in place for the second round to make sure when my mother goes to the hospital in July, they're not gonna say, you know, Mrs. Ainsley, come back next month?
Yes, that well, that that's a great question. And let me be as reassuring as possible uh on that as I can. Um, the uh the fact is that as the US uh you know, gets to that plateau uh of vaccination, they are ramping up production like no one's business. Uh, and so, you know, it's it's easily imaginable that we will begin sourcing more and more quantities of vaccines from more and different places around the world as well. So prospects are very good. There's all sorts of capacity uh that is being continuously developed, all sorts of uh manufacturing sites uh are ramping up, uh working overtime. So, uh, you know, this is a problem that uh gets smaller and smaller literally with every passing day. Uh, so I I want to be very reassuring on that, that uh Canada has contracted for ten times more doses than we would in theory require from the seven manufacturers, manufacturers that I mentioned, including uh millions and millions more doses from every single vaccine manufacturer that would allow us to make sure that they that uh two vaccines, two two doses uh get into every arm.
Perfect. Thank you.
So it's a reasonable prospect, Steve, that Mrs. Ainsley and me, uh who also has a date in July, would um would um be able to get our second shots earlier than July. I don't think you'd want to go to the bank on it, but uh but there's a reasonable prospect, given the ramping up of the availability of the vaccines and the contracts the government of Canada has signed that um that uh Mrs. Ainsley might actually be called in earlier.
It is absolutely possible. Um, as you know, John, yesterday, we announced that five million doses that we were expecting in the third quarter, so July and beyond, we were going to be receiving in June. So that's five million that we weren't counting on twenty-four hours ago. Um, today announcing these, the the shipments from Johnson and Johnson, the single dose vaccine will be starting at the end of April, uh so about a month from now. Uh, that's news that we didn't have yesterday, that we weren't banking on. And so none of that was baked into our forecast of uh every Canadian getting a a single jab by the end of June. So as you can see, we're already kind of moving the dial uh on that prediction, like just like we moved it forward from September to June. So uh I'm confident. Um, look, this is, we're not out of the woods yet. I think as everyone knows, we need to still be safe. We need to still wear a mask, still practice social distancing, as hard as that is to hear. But but uh these vaccines are on their way. They're on their way in a more significant way with every single day that goes by. And folks should be very, very confident uh that we're going to deliver on this. It's a huge undertaking. I think we have to keep it in perspective. This is one of the largest things that we've done as a country and 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 more quickly than anything uh we've done as a country. Uh, but we're gonna get it done and uh a lot of people are contributing to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and this is not just happy talk. This is a talk that's um realistic optimism. So let me just turn to a question we have from Javan, who says, um, what about citizens who are away and have already gotten both shots of the Pfizer vaccine and got tested both at the airport when leaving and also at the airport on arrival? If tested negative, they should be able to go home and quarantine for seven days. I don't see the reason for sending them to the hotel where they have to pay for food and lodging. What's your reaction to Javine's question?
Yeah, well, thank you very much for that question. And and look, we know uh how tough uh and how how much sacrifice uh we are asking citizens to make. And that is especially true of those uh who travel. Uh, we have said that we're asking people to not uh do non-essential travel. And unfortunately, that includes vacation travel. And because of these variants that were popping up from Brazil, from the UK, uh for many, you know, places that Canadians travel to, frankly, Brazil, uh, you know, popping that that variant popping up as it does in Florida. We put on some very stringent travel uh uh restrictions that mean that you do need to test negative before you get on a plane back to Canada, that you're tested again when you arrive at the airport. You're asked to go to a hotel for three days before you circulate in the community. And after those three days, if you test negative again, then you're free to leave. Uh, so in fact, it's a three-day quarantine as long as you test negative all the way through. That is, we understand, a hardship on travelers. Uh, but it's something that the government was um felt that it needed to do uh to keep Canadians safe, uh those who don't travel. And at the same time, in order to dampen uh those uh non-essential trips uh that uh that some were contemplating taking, uh we wanted to really drive that point home that uh for now, we're asking for Canadians to make these sacrifices and uh and uh we'll be monitoring those all the time to make sure that uh they're they're being kept up to date. And as time goes by, they will be relaxed and they will be eased and we'll be able to travel again. And I know we all look forward to that day.
Yeah, Mitzi?
Thanks for that answer, Steve. I know it's something that we're asked often as well. And I saw a data point that transmission from travel was at one point one percent or something like that, far more problematic or places like workplaces and and even family gatherings. So I do want to say to the constituents watching, I know that there are a number of um traditional family holidays like Easter. Uh, Ramadan is coming up later in uh in the month. And there's no gathering in the community um outside of your household because we are in the third wave and we have to do our part to keep everybody safe. So that's my public service announcement for the evening. Um, Steve, I do want to ask you about younger people. Um, and I know that Pfizer broke some news about younger people. Um, some research they're doing with children and youth, um, uh, you know, positively reacting to the vaccine. So when do you think in your best guess, and this question is actually um coming from Susan, so I'm I'm asking it on her behalf, um, when's your best guess that, uh, you know, those young adults um are going to be able to uh receive it? Those that have been approved, obviously, um, to the age of sixteen at this point, when will they be vaccinated?
Well, that's a great question. Um, and no surprise, Pfizer first through uh with the first pass. Um, and 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 again, just to briefly explain the process, so that first clinical trial probably didn't contain enough young people so that they could make a a a a long assessment on um on, I think it's twelve to sixteen-year-olds. It's approved for sixteen plus. Uh, so Pfizer went back out, uh extended clinical trial on that age cohort. And the data have come back, of course, as you mentioned, Mitzi, again, great news uh that that vaccine is safe and effective for twelve plus now in effect. Uh, so that data will be submitted to regulators all over the world. I assume it will be submitted to Health Canada in the not-too-distant future and to the FDA in the United States. And if things go as according to, if this data is examined and proves to be true, uh then that vaccine will be uh approved for and deployed uh in that age population. And what a relief that will be when we're able to send our kids to junior high, high school um with a vaccine in their arm and and knowing that uh, as I said earlier, if the others' reports are true, um, not only can they uh are they protected from getting sick, but but won't get that virus and won't transmit it to their friends. And they can play soccer and they can play football and they can act in the drama club and they can uh, you know, take walks and 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 hang out with their friends, uh life back to normal and kids back to normal. And uh that will be an incredible thing. So a great question and uh and what a great piece of news that that vaccine is safe and effective for for young people.
Well. Just a follow-up, Steve, on a COVID-related question, but around PPEs. You mentioned at the beginning, you were still doing a lot of work uh sourcing PPEs. So the the federal government hasn't lost, they're not just focusing on procuring vaccines, you're still continuing to look at the the PPEs that we need. And I guess the the second part of that question, I was watching the news the other night in uh I believe it was Germany or Switzerland where they're looking at a at a stronger type of PPE that they're encouraging people to use instead of that medical mask we're uh wearing, most people are wearing now. Do you see the standard changing as well for Canadians in the future?
Well, I know there was guidance, uh councillor, um, that, you know, people should even contemplate two masks. So you have the that, you know, the blue sort of disposable mask, surgical masks, some call them procedure masks. Uh, and then a fabric mask over that that kind of seals it. Um, that's a good idea. Uh, I think, uh, you know, people just need to follow basic common sense and and understand that this virus is transmitted through the air. And uh if you can um protect yourself um uh in an enhanced way by using two masks, by using better masks uh or face shields in some instances, I know some frontline workers deploy those, then you should do that. Um, and don't wait for the guidance. I think it's really just common sense. Uh, but let me share a good piece of news because you raised PPE. Uh, like vaccine manufacturing, Canada became way too reliant on China and most other countries did too uh for its PPE, including those masks and gloves and other things. And we set about fixing that. And one of the things we set about fixing was N ninety-five masks. So those masks that the our health professionals use and are used in some other applications. Well, the very first three M N ninety-five masks in Belleville, Ontario, came off the production line this very week. Uh, and we turned that one around mighty quickly too. So uh the the province of Ontario and some great workers in Ontario are now supplying our health frontline workers with Ontario-made N ninety-five masks. So.
And to do that, you're you need a the federal government, you need a license from the federal government, don't you? Like not anybody can just start churning out medical masks.
Well, anyone can start churning them out. They do need to be approved by Health Canada. And of course, you need a customer. Um, so uh you uh you have to have a hospital corporation or a province or a user, a buyer that that will buy them. The federal government is always interested in hearing from companies that are that are interested in ramping up domestic production. We continue to be very interested in that. Um, and we're continued, we continue to be committed to making sure that we're never left in that situation again, where we have to rely on importing uh this essential protective equipment. So um if you want to manufacture N ninety-five masks or any other thing, they do need to be approved by Health Canada. They are quality rigorously quality inspected at every step of the way. Uh, but we're we're interested in hearing from you.
Paul, you're gonna wrap up your production in the basement of your townhouse, right? So we've
John, we're basically trying to balance the budget in the city of Toronto that we're
I knew that we couldn't We couldn't get through one of these events without the councillors saying we need more money to balance our Toronto budget. Um, and uh and Paul has been remarkably consistent in his uh plea for further funding from the federal government because he doesn't seem to be able to have any success with the government, the level of government that is supposed to fund the city of Toronto.
Our budget as well.
Well, I for one, I for one look forward to uh councillor, and I know uh I know you're well aware of uh the the money we've sent to absorb some of the losses from transit uh to do safe restart, to supply equipment uh to municipalities and some of the things that have flown through the province. Um, and of course, we've tried to have everyone's back and and that includes everyone in the city of Toronto. Um, but I think we all look forward to getting back to more traditional, you know, uh arguments in the media about transit funding and all these other things that uh that we uh that we usually debate in the pages of the Toronto Star. And so
Have we told you about the funding for the Scarborough Transit yet?
Oh, I'm well aware of that one. Yes, that one transcends your borders. Yeah.
LRT, LRT East. And and we'll, when it opens, we'll give you a ride on it.
Yes, yes. We'll we'll give you a free ride on the Scarborough LRT and the Scarborough subway, which we are quite looking forward to.
Extraordinary.
Yeah, so we have uh we have not answered the some of the questions that constituents have put to us about other subjects, but uh with the concurrence of my colleagues who have no choice in this matter, by the way. Um, I'm gonna suggest that um that Mitzi, you start with the wind up, but go to Paul and then I'll uh I'll thank Steve. So Mitzi?
Sure. Thanks. Thanks, John. And um and I I recognize that many of our constituents had many questions. Um, I'm wondering if uh if our teams that are are there could maybe put some of the answers that have been prepared in in the chat as well so that um that those answers can can be given. Um, you know, I I know that Melissa, for instance, wanted to know about uh caregivers and and, you know, those those people who are giving care to an elderly person, you know, when are they going to be prioritized? And there is guidance on that. So so we want to make sure that you have that. Um, I also um have committed Nancy's question to forward this great idea around how to better manage the AstraZeneca vaccine in pharmacies um so that people can know actually which pharmacies have them and in what dosage. I think it's a really good idea and I will commit to uh providing that to the Minister of Health, Christine Elliott. And um and there is several other questions I know that came in for me and hopefully they can be dropped into the chat. Um, or, you know, just um sign up for my newsletter and just send an email to my office and and we 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 provide updates regularly on the changes because there are changes that are happening on a regular basis. All of the changes are designed to keep you safe. Um, one of the things I did want to say, um, because this is asked in my office quite a bit, once you do receive uh your your dose of the vaccine and remember as um Stephen has said tonight, uh, all of these doses are approved by Health Canada. So the the best dose is your first dose that you're offered. That's the one you should take. And uh and currently currently we are vaccinating those over uh seventy and over, uh as well as uh anyone who has uh a chronic uh health issue such as uh heart condition, kidney disease, you fifty and over can go and uh get registered and get your vaccine uh now. Um, also, anyone over sixty can uh sign up for one of the thirty-two pharmacy sites in Scarborough. Also, anyone over 60 can sign up for one of the 32 pharmacy sites in Scarborough to get your vaccine right away. So we want to make sure that as many people do this as quickly as possible and also help your neighbor. You know, there might be an elderly person in your community and that they need help either making the call to register or signing up online. So let's, let's keep everyone as safe as
Mitzi froze.
Did we lose, did we lose Mitzi?
Mitzi's coming back. She's making a comeback. Nope, she's not.
It's 2021 disease.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yeah.
If you're not on mute, you're frozen. So Paul, why don't you pick up and we'll, we'll finish out with Mitzi when she returns to, to life.
Okay. Well, first off, I'd like to thank Steve McInnes, the parliamentary secretary to the Minister of Public Supply and Procurement. It's a great privilege to have you. Did I get the title right?
Public services and procurement. It's a, it's a mouthful.
My apologies.
Even I get it wrong, Paul, all the time.
It's a great pleasure having you here this evening. I know you're very, very busy doing the work of the federal government and I'm sure you don't get much time with your family. So thank you for, for giving us some of that time this evening to, to the residents of my ward in Scarborough-Giordwood to reinforce what Mitzi was just saying. And I say this each and every day, practice the social distancing, wear your masks, wash your hands. If you're offered a vaccine, one is not better than the other. Please take every available opportunity you have to get vaccinated. If you have neighbors that are seniors that are having trouble getting to a vaccination center, please help them get there. We have a lot of seniors that still need to be vaccinated. And I know we can get through all, together we'll get through this. And I think it's wonderful that we have all three levels of government here, myself, Steve, Mitzi and John, continuing to work hard together. I know the questions that Steve answered this evening, we can see how hard the federal government is supporting our residents here in Scarborough-Giordwood. Steve, thank you once again for participating. Everybody stay safe, stay well, have a happy Easter, stay in your bubble. Thank you so much. And back to you, John.
All right. I think we're back to Mitzi here. Mitzi got frozen out. So Mitzi, I'm sure you want to finish off.
Sure. And you guys can hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. Well, I, I really just want to join Paul in, in wishing everyone a happy Easter or just a wonderful long weekend with your family, however you choose to celebrate. And, and I want to thank my colleagues, John McKay and Paul Ainsley, just for the work that we do together in our community to try to inform people and keep everyone as safe as possible. So I wish everyone the best. Steve, it was really awesome, awesome to have you. Hearing it directly from you has been really wonderful and we will be sure to repeat this and share this information to get it out to, to the people so that they can feel a little bit more at ease that those vaccines are, I think you said that there was, they were being winged over to us as we speak. And I thought that was a really good image. So thank you so much for taking the time to join us from Gatineau tonight.
Well, thanks, thank you, Paul. And thank you, Steve. Steve and I are friends longstanding. I was going to say we're old friends, but I'm, I'm the old part, you're the friend part. And, and you have, you've had an hour with Steve and you realize how well and ably served we are as the people of Canada by Steve's service to, to our country. And, and I know that sounds a little monotonous and Steve is going to say, oh, come on, John. But the truth of the matter is, Steve, I can't think of anyone I would rather have as the parliamentary secretary to the Minister of Procurement in this situation because this is a very challenging situation. And you and the minister have proved to be more than able in procuring massive amounts of doses in extraordinarily difficult circumstances, which even those of us who consider ourselves to be your friend and supporters don't necessarily fully appreciate. So truly, Steve, thank you for your service. You're a good guy and I really actually look forward to going to Ottawa and seeing you once again.
Well, right back at you, John.
Yeah, yeah. So again, thank you.
Great to see three levels of government working together too.
Well, actually, that's the big benefit of this town hall is that the constituency is working together. And, and while Paul keeps asking for money, the, the reality is that we actually work on problems together and are very, very collegial. Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, folks in Scarborough should know that doesn't happen everywhere.
Although I'm, I'm not sure that they necessarily appreciate that, but you're right about that. It doesn't happen everywhere. And so we, we are actually quite fortunate in the, in the circumstances. So again, thank you and thank you to our constituents who have contributed to these questions because all of the questions, one way or another, originated with our constituents. And we, and those that we, those questions we didn't get to, certainly for my part, will post some answers to, to those questions. So again, thank you and we appreciate everyone's participation.